Our story began in 1991. Over time, the mortgage industry has experienced many changes, but our core values here at CIS have always remained the same: character, integrity, and service. You don't need to be a mortgage expert to get a great financial plan. You just need to work with one. Our focus and dedication have allowed us to help thousands of families reach their dream of homeownership. Whether it be refinancing your current home, buying a manufactured home, or purchasing investment property, we have a product for you. We invite you to find out more by visiting our website at CISHomeLoans.com or like us on Facebook. CIS Home Loans: Mortgage Loans Made Simple. Equal Housing Lender.
I believe that six o'clock hour has arrived, and that's our usual starting time for our meeting. So we'll call the meeting to order at this time. I appreciate each of you who have come tonight. We have not too long an agenda, but we have our 192019, I'll get it said in a minute, audit review tonight, and our auditors are with us, and we'll be covering that in the latter part of our meeting tonight. Just want to make a couple of announcements quickly, and then we'll get into the meeting. It's just a short time now. If you have not participated in the census, this is to go out on the airwaves tonight and at the paper. If you have not participated in the 2020 census, time is drawing near. It's still very, very important that you be counted. We want every citizen that lives in Hamilton and Marion County for that matter to be counted. Our state has been lagging behind in this, and we need to get caught up and be counted. It's so important. It's vital. Each citizen in the next decade's gonna bring us in federal dollars alone about $13,500 over the next 10 years. So it's very important to be counted. It's part of the order that we live in and our national order to have a census every 10 years. We need your participation. The COVID-19 virus has not gone away. It continues to be in our area. We've had various workers out with the virus, and most of them began to turn the corner and get back to work. I think we had four return to work today that's been out. We've got a couple more workers out, one in the hospital. We're praying for his recovery, and we've got other area citizens also suffering with this virus. So continue to be careful. If you can't social distance, you need to wear the mask and continue to do the things that's important. Wash the hands. Sanitize areas where you work. Sanitizing is real important in this. And according to all the reports, the vaccine is supposed to be on the horizon. The vaccine that helps us to overcome this or not have the disease seems to be real close, and we're hoping to see that introduced to the public before long. So let's hang on till we find a solution to this virus problem that's been plaguing us. I know the schools, the principals are here tonight, and they've had a lot of situations developed in a short time. They've been back at school, and I know it's not easy, guys, to know what to do next exactly, but y'all are doing a fine job from what I'm hearing. We do have the new garbage truck on hand. It's been delivered, and we're beginning to distribute all of our new cans to each household. If you're gonna need more than one can, you'll need to contact the City Hall or sanitation department. And if you have a qualifying can, I understand we can come out and mark it for you and pick up your socket can. If you're gonna need that kind of service, we can pick up that socket can. If we mark it for you and make it legitimate for the routes that we run. The routes are gonna be changing somewhat. There'll be five routes. They won't be on the same days that we've been working. We'll let you know more about that as we go along. Mike Johnson, our sanitation supervisor and super, is gonna be telling you more about that as we go, and he'll keep the public informed so that we can make sure everybody has service. So with all those things said, we're gonna stand at this time and have invocation and do our pledge, and we'll get started. Our Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight. We're so thankful, Lord, for this day of life that you've given us. Lord, we thank you for your blessings. We ask you to be with us in this meeting tonight. Help us to conduct business for our city in a way that would be pleasing to you. We ask you to safeguard our country. Lord, we know there's new decisions to be made with our Supreme Judge passing recently. There'll be new appointments. We pray that those will be made to honor you and to, Lord, do good for our country and our nation. We certainly thank you for our leaders. We ask you to be with each one of our leaders in our nation tonight and help them to continue to have the strength to carry on in perilous times such as we live. I pray this prayer in Christ's name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. The first item tonight on our agenda is a recommendation to approve the minutes of the September 8th, 2020 council meeting. We'd need a motion. Jean made the motion to approve her minutes. We need a second. Herb made a second. All in favor of those minutes? Thank you. Second item on our agenda is our annual presentation of our alcohol tax money totaling $135,000 that'll be given to the principals of our schools. And gentlemen, we'll ask you to come right over here, and Angela has your money. She's gonna make the presentation tonight.
See, one of us is not here, so you have to be present. We're gonna keep that one. No, the city had originally agreed to donate $135,000 to be divided among the three schools. And part of that was to be $200 for each teacher. And so I kinda broke it down. I went by some numbers that y'all had from the year before. I think the elementary school had increased by two teachers from what we had the year before. So I'm gonna kinda break it down how I did this so it'll make a little bit of sense. I had the, the elementary school has 49 teachers. So 49 at 200 each is $9,800. The middle school, we had its 27 teachers at 200, and that came to $5,400. The high school, we had its 31 teachers at 200 each, and that's $6,200. When I took that teacher fund money, is what we refer to it as, off of the 135, that left $113,600. And when I split that three ways, that came to each one of you getting $37,866.67. I have these envelopes. You can see how I broke it down. That's the elementary school. And here's the high school. That's kind of a total of what you get. Keeping this one somewhere. Do y'all wanna give it to him? Okay. All right. And that's just for this year. We kinda went by the same basis that we had done it the year before. So you have anything you'd like to add to that?
Well, we're most delighted that we were able to provide that again this year. And we know that probably more than any year in recent times, you guys can use the funds. With a lot of your projects being shortfall last year and then not knowing if you can actually sell food items or anything like that this year for fundraisers, I'm sure it's really gonna come in handy for you.
Yes, sir.
I hope y'all can use it. We'll be glad if it serves a good purpose.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can I tell you how much we appreciate it?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you so much.
Item three on our agenda tonight is the announcement of new hire for the sanitation workers. And this young man comes to us with a lot of experience and previous experience in sanitation work. His name is Craig Weiss, and we want to announce the hiring of him as an addition to replace a retiring part of our crew. Is that correct, Mike?
That is right.
Okay. And the recommendation to pay Craig Weiss would be $15.40 per hour for this position. He comes to us with CDLs and previous experience. So that would...
Is this start-out pay or is that higher? That's start-out?
It's a start-out thing.
And to pay Craig, we'd have to have a motion and a second to pay him. A payday. A motion, need a second. Herb made a second. All in favor of paying Craig $15.40? Let me thank you. Item five is we're participating in a national awareness program here. It's the neonatal intensive care program that's used by about 500,000 babies each year. And the proclamation reads, whereas 500,000 babies are admitted to the neonatal intensive care every year, and whereas families of NICU babies often struggle to find resources, support, and education, and whereas funding for research into the cause of the NICU state as well as the holistic care of NICU families is vital. And whereas NICU awareness study provides an opportunity for families whose lives have been affected by NICU to share their story, to honor dedicated health professionals and to meet others and know that they are not alone. And whereas the establishment of NICU Awareness Month will also provide visibility to research that improves the quality of life for NICU babies and their parents. Now, whereas Aunt Robert F. Page, Mayor of Hamilton, do hereby proclaim September 30th, 2020 to be NICU Awareness Day in Hamilton Albion. And I want to make this a part of tonight's meeting. And I'm gonna sign it and get the paper to mention it.
Yeah, I'll get you to sign it. You just put your paper in the paper.
Thank you. Okay. Item six in our meeting tonight is our 2019 audit review for the city of Hamilton, and it'll be presented by Rigs Accounting. And we'll let the representatives of Rigs Accounting come over at this time and talk with us about our most recent audit.
So Leanne gave y'all copies of everything. Nice. Got contracted.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'll just talk this way. Because it's hard to talk with that. But first of all, I'd like to start out by saying thank you for allowing us to do the audit. We appreciate that very much. I was gonna go over it tonight. You know, it's like a 50-page audit, but I've tried to condense it down to three pages, and it's worked well with other places that we've gone to, and it's worked well here. So I was gonna stay with that same format if it's good with everybody else. I think it is, but you can tell me if it's not acceptable. But the first page there, so it's, you know, the little three-page white sheet of paper that Leanne gave you. And the first page is on governmental general fund. And the general fund is on modified accrual. And what that means basically is what comes in and what goes out instead of more on an accrual basis like the Water Works. That's good because you gotta see what's coming in and going out and how you're gonna pay for it and things like that. But so this is the general fund. What we're gonna go over first is on modified accrual. And so just to get started on the details on it, you've got the balance sheet there. And we're comparing 2018 to 2019 to see if, you know, we're better off or worse, that type thing. I've got the page number. I refer at the top to the page number in case you wanna go back and look later, like page five, column one. That's where these numbers are coming from if you wanna look back later. But so let's get, let's start with the details. The assets for 2018 were $5,503, 2019, $5,454. So they had a decrease of... I'm trying. My, there's a glare or something. So $49,53. And basically, you know, I've got the number one out there beside it. And so if you go down a little bit, you see number one, and it tells you what the variances were. It was like cash decreased by $123,000. Receivables increased by $79,000. The decrease in cash was from capital items being purchased. The increase in receivables was mainly the timing between the city and the water. Basically, they pay things for each other, and then they reimburse each other those amounts. So that was the difference on that. All right. The next line item is liabilities. So in 2018, it was $307. In 2019, it was $310. So that was just a small change of $2,700 there. The equity, it changed by a decrease of $51,768, which that's gonna be the bottom line on the income statement, the next section. So let's go ahead and go to it and figure out what the differences were there. When you look at income statements, you've got revenues, $7,407 versus 2019, $7,983. So you had an increase in revenues of $575,000. If you look at number two down there, it'll tell you what that is. And that's the revenues increased under other revenue, which had to do mainly with the county sales tax collections of $190,000. So that was an agreement that you received in this year from them. Other increases were sales tax, $179,000, financial institution excise tax, $104,000, occupational fees, $49,000, senior center grant, $44,000. And I mentioned, the police fines did go up $10,000 this year. But the reason I mention that is because last year, they had come down so far. So they have gone up some this year. The next line item was on expenses. It says it goes from $5,391 to $6,367, so an increase of $976. So if you look at number three down there, it'll tell you what that is. The largest increase was in capital outlays, which I mentioned that already. That was some of the use of the cash of $1,0132. And most of that was in the recreation center renovation cost plus some autos were purchased and equipment. The second largest change was in debt. It had a decrease of $341,000, which had to do with, you know, when you have a lot of grants going on, you do a drawdown from that credit line, and then you pay it back. And so there wasn't as much activity. So that had, the reason it was down was because of paydowns on the credit line. Then the other segments are like general government. It had increased like $96,000. Public protection increased $50,000, and public works increased $34,000. So there's all your increases on that. Then the next line item is other financing sources. And so that's number four because, you know, it went down $274,000. But this, what this line normally includes is transfers from other funds. And then a decrease, they had a decrease of $181,000, but loans decreased by $400. Because what comes into that other financing sources is income. When you get a loan, it shows up there. When you do transfers in, it shows up there. And when you do transfers out, it shows down there. So the loan decreased by $455, which would make sense that you're not paying back those paydowns. I talked about it just a moment ago. So there's your changes there. So the next thing, because you know your bottom line is the negative $51,768. And so to do an overall analysis on the balance sheet income statement, you would see the assets decreased and equity decreased. But it was due to capital outlays of $1,783, which would provide years of use instead of ordinary operating expenses. So if you're gonna spend, you know, basically, you spent some of the reserves you had to buy capital assets. And then revenue increased, $575,000. So that's always a good thing. And two, you've got quite a bit of reserve still left, the $5,145. So overall, the city is better off than it was in the prior year. So we've talked about the general fund. So let's go to the second page, and we'll talk about the proprietary fund, which is the water department. That just means basically we're charging for services. That's what proprietary fund means. So let's do the same type thing, compare 2018 to 19 to see what our differences are. So we got assets and deferred outflows. And now remember, this is full accrual instead of modified accrual. But in 2018, $12,888. 2019, assets, $11,980. So there was a decrease of $907. So if you look at number one, the largest decrease was in trustee health funds of $549. And that's because that one bond got paid off. So those funds weren't sitting there to be held to pay on those bonds. The second decrease of $375 was in fixed assets, which was due to depreciation being recorded. So over here on this side, you know, if we've got an asset that's, you know, that's gonna last us for 50 years, we depreciate it over here on this side. So, but we still have to record that depreciation. Also deferred outflows increased by $36,000. And what's in those deferred outflows is, remember those actuarial studies for the insurance? And then you have an actuarial study for the retirement plan? Both of that is in those numbers. And let's see. I don't think I've talked about line two yet, liabilities and deferred inflows. But liabilities went from $2,556 to $1,568. So that's $488,000 decrease. And basically, that's that bond that was paying off on the water side of $540. And then accounts payable had increased by $77. So accounts payable increased on the water side, but the receivable increased on the general side. So you can see that those are just one to the other. All right. So then the equity on this side is changed by negative $419,703.07, which that's the bottom line on the income statement down there. So let's go to the next section, to the income statement. And we've got revenues, $1,881 versus $1,919. So revenues were up $38,000. So if you look at number three there, revenues did increase. They were mainly to usage. There wasn't any major changes in customers or anything like that. Number four, expenses, $2,529 versus $2,714. So $185,000 increase. So if you look at number four, the largest increase was were in salaries of $54,000, supplies of $48,000, depreciation $39,000, chemicals $26,000, lab testing $16,000, repairs $15,000. So that was your major changes there. Then non-operating revenues expenses was $46,702 last year, $10,000 this year. And basically, what that is, is the interest. You know, that bond had paid off in this year, so the interest was dropping. And that's what shows up in non-operating revenues expenses is mainly interest expense. Next line item, transfers. In 2018, it was $1,194. And in 2019, it was $385,000. So you had a decrease of $809,000 in transfers. So if you look down there at number five, mainly this comes from the general fund. Most all of it comes from the general fund. But the general fund didn't have to send as much money over there because those bonds weren't being paid through the water. And then last year, there was some transacts, some transfers from the acquisition fund that you didn't have this year because there were some capital items that were purchased in the water from the acquisition fund. So if you look at a final analysis on this one, overall assets decreased mainly due to debt payments and depreciation. So if they're gonna decrease, it's good that we paid debt back and depreciation of our assets over time. And equity decreased even after the transfer from the general fund. But depreciation for the year was $540. So you know, you could always add that back because that's not a cash flow item. So in essence, at this point, the water was still needing assistance from the city. But the city, you know, has some reserves to help with this. And also, it did increase some in income, so there was positives. But overall, you know, it's still relying on the city fund. Okay? So then the next page. I always just try to say, okay, if I was looking at this, what are things that I would wanna know about? You know, point out pages that you might wanna go back and look at later or something. But pages 18 and 19 notes gives you assets greater than $5,000 capitalized during the year. So on the city side, there was like two AC units that were purchased, major pavement done, three autos purchased, various equipment, the Ragnesdale project, recreation center update, Grandview Bridge, and Buccaneer Street. So that's where a lot of the capital improvements went. And then on the water side, there was one auto purchased, two AC units, major repair done, and equipment on that side also. Then the second thing is on page 23 and 24, the notes give you a detailed listing of all the debt. So if you wanted to see what, you know, bonds you had out there and things like that, they're in the back on that page. Then the next thing, number three, page 33 and 35, they discuss those post-employee benefits that we talked about in the past on insurance. You remember how we had, we had to pay the actuarial person to come in and figure out what he thinks the liability's gonna be, and then we have to adjust it? And, you know, you can see I've left on here 15, 16, 17, 18, and 19 just so you could see the increase over time. But if you hadn't have implemented the things that you've implemented, that number at one time was gonna be $2,300 and something. So it is a lot lower than what it could be and because of the changes you've made. And actually, that one number, that $2,392, that was from a few years ago. I'm sure that's even grown further down. So I always wanna point out where we stand on that. And another thing, the growth from 18 to 19, to 19, the $745 to $847, they had changed the discount rate from 4.18 to 2.66. So in essence, they're saying, well, you're not gonna earn 4.8%, you only might earn 2.66, which is the average of the bond buyers, 20-year, general obligation municipal bond. And they, they said, we're gonna be a lot tighter on this. We're gonna not let you have these rates. We're gonna make you use more normal rates, you know, because you're probably not gonna get those others. So that's mainly your increase from 18 to 19 is to say that you weren't gonna earn as much money. I was trying to see if there was anything else in there that I missed. Okay, I don't think so. And then the last thing there is, you know, I get asked a lot when I'm doing audits, is there anything we could do better or things like that? And the last couple of years, we've talked about the court and controls that we needed to implement in the court, which we have implemented controls in the court. But I've got number four there, considerations to improve and address. So I think we could probably spend some more time in the court beyond the financial statement audit due to implementing even more controls and also, you know, for some incomplete files that I reviewed. I just would like to find the answer to some of those files, you know, what, some details on those files. But, you know, that went further than the financial statement audit. So that would be my recommendation on that. so that would be my recommendation on that, is to spend some more time in the court area. But overall, the city's healthy, it's in good shape and so. That's about all we got for tonight, unless y'all have questions.
You covered 50 pages in a hurry.
I sure did, aren't you glad?
Do you all have any questions for our audit of the 2019 audit? It's good to hear you say the city's in good shape because these people worked hard to make it that way the last four years.
That's correct.
And I'm real proud of the performance of our council to help us make it that way. We have spent a good deal of money in the year 19, but we've seen some great improvements that bore our dollars and we're real proud of those. And if you don't mind, I'm going to, probably want to, me and Angela and maybe to get a good listing of what we need to look at in our court system to make sure we've got all our checks and balances in place. Maybe if we would need to get a few answers, we'll look for those answers too. I'm not opposed to having everything, that we have a good paper trail on everything and one of the things I think that we've done, it's going to prove to be a blessing, is we're only taking checks or money orders now for our fines that the court has found people owing and that'll be a lot better trail in my opinion than, than cash payment, so not at all saying there's anything wrong, but I'm just saying that good checks and balances are important to any program and our court's no different than any part, other part of our revenue gathering. It needs to be as accurate as any part of the city, so we'll, we'll look at the possible answers that we might come up with and maybe some more suggestion from you and fine tune that with you, okay? Any other comments or things that you'd like to ask from our audit this year?
And I'm always available if you need it.
Yeah, I mean, if any one of you would want to talk privately, they can give you a call at the office, would that be correct? Okay, or?
I'm out on all of it.
Well, if we need to find you, we can find you, okay? Thank you very much. Any other comments about the audit? I know you worked doubly hard to make sure that things got checked. Overall, I think a good synopsis of our, a good snapshot of our city and the direction we're headed and spending money is not always a bad thing if you're getting something good for it. And we just don't have any money to waste. Alright, Scott, any words of wisdom from our attorney tonight?
No, Earl's tonight.
Okay. How about it, Angela, is there anything that we forgot to cover tonight?
Can we go into executive session for just a few minutes on good night in character?
Yes, yes, we can, sure can.
How about the motion, we go into executive session?
I'll see.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to enter an executive session. All in favor of that? Okay, okay. I think that's all of the vote.